Hi, it is 5:32 and we're going to start our ordinance committee. In attendance is Molly Spino, Anne Rouette, and our corporate counsel, Michael Magistrally.
Is that a quorum? Do you have a quorum?
No, but a quorum is two.
A quorum is two.
There's only three of us and I think, did you figure out whether or not Paul got the agenda?
He said he was coming. He was available.
It did. Again, she asked, sorry.
Yeah, don't worry. Molly asked me and I said, so we have two discussion items, but we can approve the minutes from the last meeting. So Molly, will you give a motion?
Booted.
Second it and we both approve?
Aye.
Okay. So the Fair Rent Commission, so this has been a discussion on the agenda for a while. But I'm going to defer to our corporate counsel for...
Yeah, so this committee has discussed this before and I've taken your comments back to the Fair Rent Commission. We incorporated some stuff and I also ran it by an attorney who works for Connecticut Legal Services, who was very instrumental in getting fair rent commissions set up across the state. And I sent it to him for his review and he gave me a couple of suggestions, but he thought it was fine. So this is the final version that Fair Rent Commission would like you to approve.
Okay. So trying to go back however many meetings here, so the changes that, you know, you're proposing, which ones are different than the last ones?
I don't know that I'm going to be able to tell you.
I know.
Seems like they all kind of blended in.
Yeah. I know the complaints was a big thing going to the, going to the city clerk's office and
Right.
And I would imagine the city clerk's office is still okay with that. Okay.
Well, that's what makes the most sense because, and if you remember from our discussions, that the ordinance that we had in place was really, should have been just considered a placeholder. The state law required the city to have something in place, I think by July of 2023.
2023, yes.
And so that was kind of a rushed thing. Oh, we better get something there. And this now is the result of more research, more reading the statute. There's this organization they put together, what's called the Fair Rent Commission Handbook with, you know, model ordinances, and this is a compilation of all of that.
Okay.
I would say probably the one thing that I can think of that is different, if you look on page four of six, subsection H, right, kind of towards the top of the page, the part about an interpreter.
Yeah.
The Fair Rent Commission shall provide the services of an interpreter whenever requested. Initially, what we had in there was that the person requesting the interpreter had to pay for it. And we were told, no, you can't do that.
Yeah.
You have to, so kind of, and aside for that, when I put together the corporation council's budget this year for the mayor, I included line items for the Fair Rent Commission because there's, there is nothing now. So, because we have postage expenses, now if an interpreter is needed, we'll have that expense. So, you know, plug in some budget numbers in to try to cover that. So that was one thing that changed from the last time that this was presented to this committee.
And I think, you know, going back, Paul and I were both on the commission, or on the ordinance committee, when Vic, you know, we took basically the language of the statute. And that point, we were really more concerned of who is going to serve on the Fair Rent Commission.
Yeah.
And so...
That's still an issue.
It is still an issue.
Practically speaking, yeah.
Finding people?
Yeah.
So what comprises the commission today or where we have a vacant?
So today we have, um, one, two, three, so can you bring it up on your computer? So Kevin Hayes is the chair. Travis Lipinski is on it, but he's had some attendance issues. Not completely absent, but tough to get him there. Scott, his last name I can't remember, he's been pretty good. Matahal.
Yes.
Oh, here we go. Connie Quinn is really good. I like her. She's the secretary.
I like her.
Deborah Brown is a recent addition. So Donna Isley was on and she resigned.
Oh.
She's, I just talked to her this morning. She's been traveling a lot.
I didn't forward you an email about that? Yeah, Donna's off. So that leaves us with Travis, Connie, Deb, Kevin, and Scott. Five.
So can we go over, so we had said we wanted to have a real estate person on it.
Seven.
Two tenants, was it two tenants? Landlords? I thought it was a total of seven, but I'm trying to, it's probably right in here.
Travis Lipinski.
Is the realtor, right?
He's a landlord too.
And he's a landlord. Donna was the tenant. Connie is neither, you know, she owns her own home, but she's neither a landlord nor... Yeah. Deb again is neither. So Donna was the only tenant we had.
And I think that was what was important, you know, with, in order to really have the perspective, both a landlord and a tenant.
We had a guy named Keith Farrell from the Democratic side. Yeah, he never showed up. Did he really? Yeah, I don't think he came to one meeting. Maybe the, maybe one. That's it? Yeah. Yeah. A push for what? Yeah, so the ordinance says seven members.
Right.
And again, we're down to one, two, three, four, five. And it doesn't say what the blend should be between landlord and tenant. So if you think that's important, I could always add some language like that. Didn't the original say it should be 50/50? Am I wrong?
I remember, not 50/50, but I think we needed to have representation from both a tenant and a landlord.
Yeah.
But it didn't say what that representation would be. And then
Put two.
Yeah. And we talked about the, I mean, this was not in, in the language, but we thought a realtor would be good because they would know fair market value of...
Well, I would agree with that because it's really, the burden is on the parties to introduce evidence. So that part of the equation that talks about what are rents in the surrounding area, it'd be up to the parties to bring in evidence about that. You know, we shouldn't have people sitting on the board who are basically producing evidence in a case.
Well, I was just, in my mind, it was more their profession, you know?
I know, but they, but essentially you're thinking it's because they could give an opinion about what's a fair rent. And that's what they shouldn't be doing. So...
So we're down to, we need two more people on it, but either way, I mean, this is beyond the discussion of this, these changes. I don't know, Paul or Molly, do you have any comments on the proposed changes?
No.
I have no comment. I honestly, I honestly was waiting to discuss it tonight because it was voluminous. And I just didn't remember what the state was saying we had to do. So how do I even see this on, how do I get this up on the computer, the original you're looking at right there?
Molly, you go. Ordnance committee?
Not the original, what was sent by email today?
Well, if you go today.
Was it? No, I guess it was Friday.
Go to the 17 and pull up the ordinance.
You're not...
I would hit the 17.
17, yeah, I hit it. I did. Yeah, no.
Yeah, I'm sorry, over there.
Oh, gone.
Here's your packet.
I think the original ordinance that was there said two persons who are tenants, two persons who are landlords, and three persons who are neither. I have the original. Yeah.
Are you sharing it on our screen?
No, this is the one that's all...
The technology is like...
Well, yeah, you kind of, it's there. But it's just what I said. So it says two persons who are tenants, two persons who are landlords, and three persons who are neither. So I don't have that, anything like that in here, but I could easily put it back in if you wanted it in there.
I think it's important, you know, we...
In the new one?
Under C.
Well, that says one who's a tenant, one who's a landlord. So wait a minute, how did that? Oh, yeah, 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 I see.
All right, so who's on first?
Let's go back. Let's go back. Oh, yeah, it's in subparagraph C. Thank you, Heather. So it is in there. Yeah. I just moved, I just moved things around.
Okay.
So at the end of the day, it's two, two, and two, right? Two landlords, two tenants, and two neither? Two, three?
Right, so the three would be the appointed, well, they're all appointed by the mayor.
I understand your terms. Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, I think that was important for us and important in our discussion when we initially made this an ordinance.
But so it's there. That's good. Is this the state recommended? So the state didn't really recommend anything, but what we have is there kind of a group of, you know, so this is what's called the Fair Rent Commissions in Connecticut Toolkit. Yep. There was a collaboration by Connecticut Legal Services, the Connecticut Fair Housing Center, and the Melville Charitable Trust. And they have a model ordinance way in the back here. I don't remember what they said. Yeah, and they said pretty much exactly that. Seven members, three alternates. The seven regular members, two landlords, two tenants. And, but it says at least. So, you know, it is kind of, kind of tracks this model ordinance.
Okay. But we right now have one tenant, you know, do we want to consider changing that?
We don't have any tenants now, right? We don't have any tenants. I just, I just lost it.
Go down for that. That's probably behind the thing, but yeah.
I apologize for that. I'll have to go back and look at the, I think she sent me an email. I'll have to see if you were CC'd on it.
I can't, she just...
But I forgot my reading glasses. I'm an idiot.
Mike?
Yeah, I know.
The determination of excessive rent. Where did all of these?
Can I suggest this, Michael?
Come from?
The language are we using now for that, for staffing, which is really very important. Who's 13?
24-2, yeah.
Right out of the statute.
Okay.
The same language that...
What was your question, Paul? I'm trying to see what, what are we, 24-2. But I would like determining services, no, no, where the staffing. 24-1, subparagraph C. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we'd...
Her vacancies. Members of the fair can, shall be appointed for... You know, we're really, it almost seems like we're going to have to sit down and look at a calendar and figure that out because the initial appointment happened a couple of years ago.
Right.
So we're beyond that.
Is Stacy here for this discussion? Excuse me, is Stacy here for this discussion or the tax?
She's here for the next one. I would suggest we include some, a sentence or so, which basically in legal terms says, "To the best of our ability, the city will staff as follows." Okay. Because I think, I think if we actually put, you know, we're having so many problems just getting anybody to sign up in order to get it to me to two, two, and three.
Right.
You know, it's just going to be ongoing, like, you know, birding cat sort of scenario.
Right, it would be the intent of this.
Yeah, I think, I think language should read, "To the best subject availability and to the best of our ability, the city will." Okay.
Are you good with them, Molly?
I'm good with that, yeah. Yep.
All right, so I know, so we only have it on the agenda for a discussion, but at some point, we're going to need to, you know, make a decision on it before a public hearing and get the changes made.
Do you have recommendations based on what Michael wrote?
I do not, other than, you know, going back to our original language, which you had mentioned. It's been difficult for them to get people and, but Michael, I think, used the toolkit and, you know, really tightened it up, which we knew it would need to be.
Yeah.
Molly, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't think so.
So I will add some type of limiting language to paragraph 24-1C. Yeah. Okay. It is our intent to do, to follow this protocol, the best of our ability, but...
Yeah, I mean, it is the...
It will be subject to availability.
Right.
Volunteers' availability.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're all appointed by the mayor anyways, so it would...
And, you know, frankly, that's an issue for a lot of the different boards and committees.
I know.
Yeah, I know.
It's a problem.
You know, one thing that'll come before you, it hasn't yet, William Wallach is proposing eliminating, and Heather, you help me on this, so what's William, the Arts Commission, something like that? Yeah, because they can't get members. They can't get people to sit on it.
Well, and now TDC has the, you know, sort of the subcommittee of...
Yeah, EDC.
No, TDC, the Toronto Development Corporation, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's not a part of the city, but it's, it's actually, they have a pretty active membership on it, the Cultural Arts Committee, so, right. So to me, wouldn't the arts fall under that? Because I know they have the Warner represented and...
But William's proposal was to take some of the authorities and the mission, if you will, of that Arts Commission and blend it into the Economic Development Commission.
That's been a talk since Rista was here too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he's got an ordinance that he drafted that we thought was going to come be here today, but it's not.
Yeah.
Because he's going to run it by the EDC first. But again, my point is, part of the reason for him doing that is they can't get members, can't get people to serve.
But I know that the Cultural Committee, the Subcommittee of the TDC is pretty active.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Seem to have local businesses and they have the Warner involved and the Nutmeg and it's, so maybe, you know, people could only give so much time, you know, to, and those would be the exact same people that would be on the Arts Council, I think, so, anyway.
You know, one thing that would help in general with the city, and I brought this up before, and, you know, it may be a moot point at this point, depending on the technology, but when I was chairman of the Board of Education, we got our biggest meetings. Because it was televised, it was amazing how many local people watched it on cable.
Yeah.
And when people see themselves, they, you know, for a lot of obvious reasons, they, they think that, you know, they're having an impact. They think that they, I think if, you know, if we were able somehow to get these meetings or this room wired to cable and, and they saw themselves, or if, if we had even council meetings, for instance, on cable, and then we made a point of having these various commissions come twice a year in front of the council to report on what they're doing and they get FaceTime, maybe that would motivate more people to, you know, give them their little 15 minutes of fame and a bully pulpit and that might get, I think there's just a total, my guess is with this generation, there's a total disconnect. People feeling, and appropriately so, that this stuff doesn't matter, you know, what they're doing doesn't matter. It doesn't impact anything and it's kind of a waste of time. If, if the city, if we reached out to them and brought them more into this and then had this somehow reported out to the public that, yeah, we're listening to these people, yeah, their opinions do matter, we're taking it seriously, et cetera, et cetera, we might have a lot more success because I think this is across the board. And the second thing, Molly, it's just, because you weren't here, but I'm going, getting back my bully pulpit, but apparently we have a lot of time, so. What I would like is some more support from the City Council, I know we can't get involved in the board, but I would certainly like to use the council, whatever capacity we can, to once again re, to revisit putting a civics curriculum in our schools, beginning in middle school, not just a half-year class, but a real civics. It's not Democrat, Republican, that's just, what are your responsibilities as a citizen? What is the government's responsibility? Those kinds of questions that are asked all the time in these days, more critically than ever before, and then, you know, and then facilitating discussions with kids, you know, what is your, and then teaching them literally how government works, you know? They, you want this whole thing, you got to show up, you got to volunteer, you got to put some effort into this thing, and here's what it takes, here's, you know, here's where you can, whatever that is, but, you know, beginning somewhere in seventh or eighth grade and then, you know, it continues in some capacity through high school, just to get people, there's just such a, you know, this generation, you know, is on their thumbs all the time and, and...
I hear our parents saying that.
Yes, I know, I know, I know. But frankly, it's just more than just the young people.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I agree, but...
I know we should acquire here, but at some point, I don't know how we breach that gap where people feel like, you know, you can't just show up maybe on election day and think that that's how democracy works. And then you get the results that everybody says, we hate all the candidates. Yeah, because you aren't, you aren't involved in picking them.
Right, right. So I'm going to go back to the agenda.
Yeah, okay, yes, okay.
So let's, you know, let's close the discussion, we'll make those other edits and, you know, even possibly talk to the mayor. I mean, the mayor is singular in terms of identifying people to be on this commission. So I think any help that we can give her to, you know, solicit, you know, people that we think might serve well on this commission would be, I think, helpful to her. She's, I think she's struggling.
I know. Well, she should know this woman, Gabrielle Peters. You know her?
I don't.
Okay. She's a young landlord, she owns multiple, I don't know how many multiple. Through some weird connection running through Michelle Cook's office, somehow at some fundraiser, she talked to me. She's a landlord, a young woman, I think she lives in Litchfield, but shows property in Torrington. And she has like this monthly meeting of landlords and just to discuss all kinds of issues that are, you know, have arisen, both with Affordable Housing Initiative and just with a lot of the laws and a lot of the regs and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's their, you know, it is their internal thing, but she's very actively involved with a bunch of, so from the landlord side, and if the mayor doesn't have her number, I can get it.
Any, and I think any referral...
And she's smart and she's aggressive and she, you know, she's really, as they say, ngamba, you know ngamba?
No.
Oh, you're Italian. What kind of Italian are you?
I'm not, I'm Irish. I'm married in Italian.
Ah, there you go. Well, you know, you know.
Ngamba?
You never heard, ngamba? It means on, well, literally means on your legs, but it's on your toes. It's a big compliment. To be ngamba is to be on your toes.
Yeah, no, I never heard that one.
Okay.
All right, listen, this is St. Patrick's Day, so, you know, we're only getting...
Or it's the best screen I had.
It did good.
Yes.
Good. All right, so with, can we end that? Can I have a motion to end the discussion? I'm sure we do a motion to end the discussion, but...
I agree, yeah, let's move on.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we do have another agenda item here, having to do with the taxation. And I know our assessor is here, probably with some comments, but, so it's chapter 187. And there's an exemption, so with the committee's approval, I'd like to invite Stacy to come up. How's that? You all okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. So with the revaluation that we just had, one of the processes...
Put the mic in front, is somehow I'm, is it me that I'm not hearing?
No, I'm not hearing you either.
Yeah.
Let's try this. Is that better?
Better.
All right. With the revaluation that we just had, one of the end processes of a revaluation is to look at the veterans exemptions. So if there is a large increase from the year prior on a revow, we are required to apply what's called a revow factor. With this revaluation, what you do is you take what I signed on the grand list, or the 24, divided by last year's grand list, 23, you come up with a number. We came up with 1.55. So we're required to round to the next nearest whole number, so that's two. So any exemption for a veteran needs to be multiplied by two. It's a multiply factor. So with that, I went back to ordinances and statutes and what does it, what does it, it seems very loud here.
I know, it's not. Heather, is there some reason why we're not hearing it over here? Oh, okay.
So with, we have the local option that you guys voted on and put into place many, many years ago. It was amended in 04, 06, 16. That's this 18727. It gives $20,000 to veterans. This revow factor needs to be applied to that $20,000 that you guys put into place. The language here in the ordinance didn't reflect that each revaluation, I have to look at this and increase it if it's so warrants by the, by the statute. So that's when I went to Mike and asked him if he could, you know, look at this, we need to kind of adopt some language that will fit that, so if there is any revow in the future that runs into this situation, it's done in accordance, not only with state statute, but also with our ordinance, so that they both follow each other. In addition to, that's where it says such increase, increase as calculated in accordance with the formulation provided for General Statute 1262G. That's where that comes into play. Now, the 20 that we added there, subdivision 19, 20, and 21, currently we have been giving veterans that fit the subdivision 20, this $20,000 local option. That has been happening since '06, but the ordinance doesn't have the language there. So I think we should put it in so that it's consistent with what we do in the office.
Okay, so I get the first part, maybe it's just me, but...
It could have been the way I explained it. Sometimes when you're in the depth of it, you understand it all when you're explaining it, you know? You don't portray it the way it's...
You're really in deep with it now, but, so you're suggesting the change, keeping the 20,000 or such increase as calculated in accordance with the formula. So that's the change in the ordinance at this point. And then the second part?
Correct, so the 20,000, I don't mean to interrupt, so the 20,000 is kept there because that is how it is written in the state statute, that you are allowed to adopt up to a $20,000 value. But in addition to that, every revaluation, there is this revow factor that may or may not be applied to all of the exemptions because of a significant increase.
Regardless of...
Regardless of income, right? Because this is income-based, right?
So this, yes, it is income-based.
The twenty thousand.
Correct, the twenty thousand is income-based.
But every veteran that's filed their DD two fourteen with the city will get double exemption because of the revow?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, whether it is income-based or not, there is now a revow factor of two that has to be applied to all veteran exemptions, this nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, and then the local option that was adopted. All of them have to be applied with the revow factor of two.
Well, thank you for explaining that, I got a letter in the mail a month ago that mine went from forty-five hundred to nine thousand, so.
That's why.
I didn't understand why, but now I do.
That's why, because of the, the increase with the revow, we have to apply this revow factor. It's nothing that a veteran has to apply for, it's, it's an automatic, based on an increase of, of last year to this year, the year prior to a revow and the revow year.
Understood, thank you.
This is all veterans or combat veterans specifically?
This is any veteran who has filed a DD two fourteen and has an honorable discharge and served during time of war. The time of war is defined by state statute. That's not, my decision is by state statute, so.
Out of curiosity, do you know, over the last twenty years, what, what windows are defined as state of war?
I'm sorry, because I couldn't hear you.
Do you know, can, do you know offhand what are defined as periods of state of war?
So World War One, World War Two, obviously.
Yeah, since two thousand and one, for instance.
Since two thousand and one, okay. We have been in actually a full state of, I don't think that, I don't think they've ever stopped the war period since we went into Desert Storm. So since ninety-three until current, we are still considered in wartime by state statute.
Essentially, all veterans that.
All veterans since nineteen ninety-three, that have. Correct, that have filed a DD two fourteen with an honorable discharge.
What's the delta in the tax collection, do you know, approximately?
I'm sorry.
Well, what, what, what effect does that have in, in absolute dollars this year for tax collection? You know?
Oh, my goodness.
If you don't know, you don't know.
I don't know, but I can certainly get that for you.
Like a gross number, that's all.
I should have brought that, I don't have that for you, but certainly I can provide that for you.
Well, I'd like to see, yeah.
Yep.
So Molly made it personal, and she, she's one.
Well, I had to ask, I got the letter and I didn't understand it, and I haven't asked anyone yet, so.
So it's important, I think, for the purpose of this discussion, would this clarify it to, you know, any veteran that might be looking at this ordinance?
This is income-based, so this ordinance is, is strictly an income-based, that income level does change annually. The state has guidelines of how they increase it, I do believe it may be COLA that they increase it by, but they, they send us a letter what the income qualifications are for a veteran to receive additional veteran exemptions. And then this local option increases whatever the state guideline was for income by twenty-five thousand. So currently, I have it here, I believe it's just, just eighty thousand, just over eighty thousand. So yes, the state guideline for a married couple is income under fifty-five thousand, one hundred. So if they are applying for this local option, it is eighty thousand, one hundred. If they have a combined income under eighty thousand, one hundred, they can apply for the local option.
So this is on the agenda for discussion, are there any other questions, Stacy?
No.
No. No.
What we would need to do, do you have any other comments?
No. I'm just not clear, though, on, I just did a quick look to see what is, what are the eligible periods of war? Right, and I'm, and I, a quick search, I found Weathersfield has it on their website, do we have it on our website?
I don't believe we do, I have it posted in the office.
Because World War One is, there's a sunset for, for some of these two, so World War Two, Korean conflict, Vietnam era, Lebanon, invasion of Grenada, Operation Earnest Will, whatever that is, invasion of Panama and Persian Gulf War.
Yes, but there are a couple of those in there where they need to have a specific expeditory medal because we were a peace action and not in wartime, so some of those do have a caveat to them. I think that they may have like a star next to them, if you're looking at the.
Does that form, the DD two fourteen have a list of the, you know, the applicable time periods on it?
No, the DD two fourteen is issued by the, by the VA, I believe, at time of them, their separation. And that gives whatever deployment they were on, it gives their start date, their end date, their enlistment dates, any medals they received, any action that they saw. It gives a full list, it's basically a history of their, their time of service.
So we don't have anything like that on our website, but, I mean, so who certifies that, that recognition, that application? Do you?
That is our office, yes, yes. They would come in and apply for it, and we have to check, you know, all the qualifications, that they've filed the DD two fourteen, that it is an honorable, that they do meet those wartime criteria, yes.
So how, how do you determine that, do you have to go to the Veterans Affairs Office, or?
It's right on the DD two fourteen, their history of the dates that they served. And as long as they're, and the other thing is, it's got to be at least ninety days, so as long as they have ninety days within the time periods that the state has set for wartime, that's how we qualify it.
Okay. So if we don't have any other questions, I think, and if we don't have any other added edits, you know, from Corporation Council, we can, we can either accept the edits as they're being proposed and vote on it. And have the discussion, we can actually vote on that, but if you're not prepared to give your endorsement.
Oh, no, I give my endorsement, Stacy and I worked on it. We, we worked on this version together, and in fact, initially, what she provided had a specific number in it, it was the forty thousand dollars you had in there, and I suggested that, well, maybe because it tied into another statute, twelve dash sixty-two G, and there's a formula there. I thought rather than having to go back and forth and maybe amending this, the next time we do reevaluation, because this only comes up, correct me if I'm wrong, when we do a reevaluation.
Correct.
So that's the only time it comes into play. So rather than plug in the specific number, I suggested changing it to say, or as such increase as calculated in accordance with that formula.
Right.
So we don't have to do this every time we have reevaluation.
So I think what I'd like to do with, you know, with your permission, is, you know, we'll end the discussion and then add an agenda item to vote, this will need to have a public hearing like any ordinance, so.
Technically, we're voting.
Well, we need to vote on it as an ordinance committee, so if we could just add an agenda item to say, like, we'll end the discussion and vote on ordinance one eighty-seven dash twenty-seven, and move it for a public hearing. Can I have that as a?
Move it.
Okay, so it's on the agenda now. Do you second it?
Uh, yes, I do.
So now that it's on the agenda officially, can we move that, that motion?
Well, the discussion, and I do have a question about it before we vote on this.
Okay. So let's move the vote to approve the amendments on this ordinance.
Yeah, I have a question about this, so this is the discussion before the vote. So my question to you, Michael, is additional exemption of twenty thousand dollars. All right, so that, that twenty thousand is in it, or is the formula? You apply the formula, it is twenty, it's not, it is not a factor of two or a factor of three or something, it's.
No, the twenty thousand dollars is the amount that was approved the, in two thousand and six.
Right.
That is the max that can be approved by state statute. Then the revow factor has to be applied to it. Torrington with this revow is at a revow factor of two. So that twenty thousand is actually a forty thousand. Which is what Michael had mentioned before, that initially, when I sent it to him, I had the forty thousand, because currently, that's what we have to give by statute, but he suggested to stay with the same language that the state statute has.
Yeah.
And then put in the calculation.
It feels like we need at least another sentence there to define in, in just general terms what that, if this is basically driven by a revow, correct?
Correct.
It feels like there should be some language in there that tells future city council members why this has, why this occurs and will continue to occur every revow.
I don't think that's a bad idea, so is there one additional sentence you would recommend?
Well, I'd leave it to the lawyers or to you guys to say, you know, something that just defines as, you know, related to a revow process. And where's that, who, who's a, a revow of two, you said, correct, I mean, that's the number we know.
Correct.
That calculation is made specifically by whom?
That calculation is made by me and then approved by the state when I've sent all the numbers in for the reevaluation. And that calculation in twelve sixty-two G, the statute that's referred to here, it does state that that is because of a revaluation.
See, I would like something that says, you know, it scales per the revow determination of so-and-so, and so, something. So here, here's, here's the answer, so. So the statute says, right now, the exemption is twenty thousand dollars. And this section doesn't speak at all about, and then, and it references twelve eighty-one F, and that doesn't at all reference reevaluation, it's just they're entitled to twenty thousand dollar exemption, right? Am I right in saying that?
I'm sorry.
Without regard to revaluation, a veteran under twenty-one eighty-one F would get an exemption of twenty thousand dollars.
Correct, with no regard to revaluation.
And then, when it goes on to, when. I just want to clarify that point. Yeah. So that twenty thousand dollars, was that just, the state came up with that number, I mean, where did that twenty, original twenty thousand come from?
That was a number that was approved back in two thousand and six.
By?
By the ordinance committee, so originally, correct.
Up to twenty thousand.
Right, the state statute says up to twenty thousand dollars. I went back and looked at some of these amendments, initially Torrington had five thousand, then they went to ten, and then in oh six, they went to the twenty thousand, the max.
So if you read, read on what it says, or such increase as calculated in accordance with the formula provided in general statutes twelve dash sixty-two G. So it specifically references that statute, and that statute is an increase in certain veterans exemptions upon revaluation. It's specifically about revaluation.
Okay.
So I don't think it's necessary to mention it in here, because the formula comes from the statute that is saying, when you, when you do a reevaluation, here's the formula you can use. That's the only time it comes into play on reevaluation. And that's, and that's, again, is the Connecticut general statutes twelve dash sixty-two G.
And I think the one that really needs to interpret this ordinance is our assessor's.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get all that, what I'm saying operationally has no effect on anything, I'm just saying for clarification of future city council members and ordinance committee members, something that just said, as, you know, something that, that ties that back to specifically, you know, something related to, or related to city reevaluation prospect, something, just, just to provide a little clarification. You know, I guess it wouldn't hurt. People don't, it's not, look, I shouldn't make a big deal about this. No, 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 I guess it wouldn't hurt to plug in just a couple of words. So after, if you're looking at what's there now, after the twenty thousand comma, and then, or something like, in a revaluation year, maybe, would that work?
Sure.
Or in a revaluation year. Yeah. Such increase as calculated. Yeah, that would, that, that's all. Would work, yeah. That's all. So people say, why, and you say, well, it's a revaluation year, and there's no big mystery, that's all.
Okay, so do you want to actually make the emotion, the motion with that amended language? You can just say, move it with that amended language.
Yes, yes, okay, here's what it is, I'll, here's, here's the amendment, so. Instead of the addition just saying, or such increase as calculated in accordance with the formula provided in general statute section twelve dash sixty-two G, it would read, or in a revaluation year, such increase as calculated in accordance with the formula provided in general statute section twelve dash sixty-two G. Right?
Okay.
Because that's the only time that the formula comes into play anyways, in the revaluation year.
Correct.
So that would, that would work. So if I made the original motion, just say, I amend my motion to include. Say that Heather's got it, right?
Yeah. And looking for a second.
Second.
And you seconded, yeah, okay, now we got it.
Any other discussion?
No.
Thank you.
You guys really beat the death, didn't you? So I can make that change, but, but so it goes to the city council now.
Right, so, well, I believe it needs to go for a public hearing, so.
We need a vote.
But yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and what I would like to do is, you know, move it to the city council, but we need to set a a public hearing date, April seventh, that would be great, so. I'm sorry? I have no plans not to be. No, I'd love to have a one coming up, but I don't. Yeah, okay, so April seventh, we'll ask the mayor to put on the agenda for a public hearing for this, and then it'll move it. So, okay?
Sure.
A public hearing and also on the agenda for a vote, because I'm assuming there will not be a lot of people, unless Molly would like to speak to it. All right, is there any other discussion for the ordinance committee?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then a motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. All right, let me call this regular meeting of the city council and WPCA to order. For the record, today is Monday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, it is now six thirty-five PM. We do have a quorum of the board, all attending in person, so with that said, if we could stand and pledge the flag. Thank you. We'll move right into item number one, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Ivyne, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, anyone from the public that wishes to address the board? Come up to the microphone and, if you could just, for the record, state your name.
Tim Monahan, resident Torrington. Go. All right.
And just as a reminder, Mr. Monahan, three minutes, okay?
Yeah, I'm gonna, that's why I'm going to only touch base on one of fifty things here, that were done wrong. I was in the small cities program with my house on Wall Street, I thought. I thought it was the greatest thing in the world when they came to my house and started looking. Here's, here's, and here's the trust of the matter. When they would, you could, I think, spend up to $50,000, but it had to be paid back. Wouldn't have paid the interest on it, but you could pay it back over the years or at death or selling the house. When I, when we first did the, went around, did the estimate of what it was going to cost. Okay, it was 127, or I mean, 27,000. I couldn't spend a lot more than that. I didn't have the money. So then when I get this thing in the mail, and I'm jumping ahead a few years here, I get this thing from Attorney Magistrelli. It's got all the vendor payments and everything they made, up to $51,000. I didn't okay $51,000 worth of work. I was in the hospital. I, so I don't know where that came from. Before that, there's some stuff about officials doing Gilburko lead inspection, leak builders, which did horrifying work on my house. Horrifying. It should be, it should be in a TV show. I invite anybody here and I, if I could demand that you had to come to my house, I would say, most people don't want somebody coming there. It is a wreck. It's in worse shape than when they started, except for the roof. That's the only thing that's not. Now, uh, when I, when I went into the hospital, they should have stopped working. If they didn't know what they were doing, then don't do anything. And it's, it's terrible. Some of the work in there. I want everybody to come over there. I'm going to try and get as many people as I can together to come over. And I'm going to give you a walk through that, my house, and from the trim on the windows to whatever. And then I get this thing they want, want me to, to all of a sudden pay. I could stay there and I could pay this when I sell it. Well, I didn't spend $51,000 on it. I mean, I'll pay what's fair, which is, and it was 26,000. And then Eversource came in and said, well, due to windows, leak was in, Mr. Leek was in agreement with that. So that knocked off 10,000. So now it's down to what, $16,000? I just, I can't pay that, but I want to get it paid up. I want to, I want to, I'm going to probably have to borrow money now, but I can't do it with a $50,000 lien on my property. I just can't borrow that much money. And it's probably going to cost me 50,000 because of the sloppy work. Doors, windows that don't open. I had somebody there and I, somebody locked my keys inside and there was somebody else up in front. And I'm yelling to the guy, which was that Pete Testa. I'm yelling to him, open the door. He can't open the front door. The door jam is stuck. It won't open. And the windows, half are stuck. The wind comes through them. He didn't insulate any of the windows. I mean, I'm not an expert carpenter, but compared to that, Russ Leek, I am. I'm a genius. And what a mess he made, what a mess. And I don't know what to do now. I need your help to help me not get lost and give us $50,000. If this came through at like, like 10 to 15,000, this whole thing, I would be in agreement with it, you know, and I would even, I would even take and pay that off as part of it. But it's, I shouldn't have to pay a dime until the place is done. Where are the, where are the inspections that were supposed to be done? I never saw any inspections done, nothing.
So it's, it's been three minutes and I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to leave that right there.
Okay.
And what I would like to recommend, Mr. Monahan, is that we can, Corporation Council and my office, Morette Wall from my office, who's been working on this small cities program with him for a number of years. We could pull together a full report about this property and then bring it back to the city council if that would be helpful for all of you. That way, the information you're hearing can be.
Right, we don't have anywhere near the time. But I just wanted to hit you with how fraudulent this, this thing is. And on top of that, it was handwritten. I, I don't know. I don't know how much damage he did to rest of Torrington, but I would go and look at whatever else they worked on. Because I would be scared, to be honest with you.
Yes, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, we'll do a full report.
Thank you very much for listening to me. You're the first people that have had the guts to, because they might have to go look at the house.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
May I leave?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Aye. Any, is anyone else from the public wishing to address the board at this time? All right, seeing and hearing none, we're going to move into item number two, 2A. I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing. Meeting minutes from March 3rd, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Ivyne. Questions or comments in the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention for the record is Councilwoman Waldron. Item 2B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of March 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Ivyne. Questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One, and an abstention for the record, Councilman Waldron. Item 2C, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special joint meeting minutes from the Board of Finance.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Riwett, seconded by Councilman Ivyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we'll move into item three. I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on April 7th, 2025 to consider an ordinance to discontinue Plain Street.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Ivyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have a note here. Since we're on the topic of scheduling public hearings, I would like to add an agenda item here. We'll call it 3A. I'll need a motion to add to the agenda. A motion for the purposes of scheduling a public hearing on April 7th, 2025 to consider changes to the ordinance, Chapter 187 taxation.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Riwett, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions on adding this to the agenda?
Well, just a comment, we had it, our ordinance committee meeting before this, we had it on the agenda for a discussion. We determined it didn't need any further discussion and we moved to vote it in. So thank you for putting on the agenda tonight.
Then I'll call the motion if there are no other. I appreciate the background. All in favor of adding this to the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then I'm going to call this. I will entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on April 7th, 2025 to consider charges, excuse me, changes to ordinance, Chapter 187 taxation. Chapter 187-27 exemption granted.
Sumo.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Riwett. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four. I will entertain a motion to approve the budget transfer request for fiscal year 2425, as further described in the manager of budgets letter dated March 12, 2025. And this, of course, is pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Waldron and Councilwoman Spino. Any questions or comments on the memo? Hearing none, we'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five. I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 143-263 authorizing mayor to apply for the annual EMPG grant.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Ivyne. Questions or comments?
Can you just give us a quick summary on this particular grant?
So this is, we do this annually. This is an emergency management program grant. And I'm going to just pull up, have it in front of me when we talk, when I talk about it. And these are the funds that, you know, as we've been going through our budgets, what we're looking at is what are the revenue offsets for the emergency management department division? This is that grant. So it'll cover salaries for an emergency manager. It'll cover communication and a few other of the expenses that make that department work.
Okay.
I know, now that I look at it, was just the resolution that you got, right? Yeah.
Yeah. So is it federally funded?
It is.
Okay.
Federal program.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Fair Housing Resolution Number 143-264 and the Fair Housing Policy Statement.
So moved. Second.
I heard Councilwoman Spino and seconded by Councilwoman Riwett. Questions or comments? And again, this is an annual adaption that we take. If there are no questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven. And this is where I'm going to look to my Board of Ed experts here. I'm, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 143-265 establishing a re-roofing project at the Torrington Middle School for a total project estimate of $5,283,720.93. The amount of the city of Torrington's cost share will be $1,494,518.96. This will be funded from a $700,000 authorized bonded amount. It has been authorized, but not, the bonds have not yet been sold. And the balance of the bonded project funds from Phase 1 of the middle school roof repairs that are currently held in our bonded projects fund, it's noted here as bond fund, excuse me, fund number 320. And the balance and the balance of which would come out of the Board of Education's capital reserve account number 313. I need that motion for discussion. Thank you.
Second.
So motion made by Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Ivyne, and the floor is open for questions. It is, yeah. No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, and item number eight. Contention on the approval of the Department of Economic and Community Development. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Deputy Public Works Director, City Engineer to authorize the mayor to award, execute, and administer a contract agreement and all construction change orders for the Railroad Square revitalization project with Yield Industries LLC of Torrington in the amount of $4,174,110. This will allow up to $207,355 for quantity fluctuation and contingencies. The funding will be coming from the DECD Community Challenge Grant Program, the City of Torrington Pavement Management Program Bond Fund, and the Connecticut Department of Transportation Town Aid Road Program, all as explained in the City Engineers Memo dated March 13th.
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Riwett made the motion and I heard Councilwoman Spino, second. Are there questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
What's, what's the percentage, the parking represents about, what percentage of this build out?
The parking?
Yeah, I mean, a big part of this is parking, isn't it, providing parking?
So I, is Paul, oh, there he is, there's Paul. Okay.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Hi. So the, the project is broken down into many different phases. There's the John Street revitalization, there's the promenade, there's Water Street, Church Mason Street, and then the Christmas Village Parking Lot and Pocket Park. So if you're referring to the new parking lot behind Christmas Village, that, that portion is roughly about, so the, the portion, the, the city-funded portion is about 3.5 million and the parking lot is, is about, I believe, 1.5 of that.
And I think the question was how many parking spaces?
Yeah, how big?
Yes. How big of a parking lot would this be?
There is about 70 parking spaces, I believe, 70 or 80. It's, it's the purpose, one of the main purposes of it is to, is to move the allocated spaces from the Mason Lot where the teachers now park and put the teachers, put the teachers' dedicated parking back there. And that will then free up the Mason Lot for public use during, during the daytime. So basically the same size as, as Mason.
Okay. Will, will it be metered parking or is it just free parking there?
It will, well, the, the, the teacher parking is, is, is balanced. The, the cost of that is balanced by the Board of Ed maintaining winter maintenance of the parking area. But I believe that the after-hours public portion will be free. Thank you.
Will these be designated for teachers so that the public doesn't use them during the day?
During the daytime, yes.
Okay.
And currently, those teachers are parking at the Mason Street Parking Lot. I think a lot of us, I grew up in Torrington, called it the YMCA Parking Lot.
Pardon me, yes.
How many parking spaces are over there and how many of those are consumed by teacher parking?
Almost all of them are. And I'm not sure the number, Mayor. Like I said, I believe it's in that 70 to 80 range.
And I know that during the day, even though the teachers are parking in the Mason Street Parking Lot, there are parking spaces available for other businesses and particularly for the YMCA.
Yes.
So there is such a high demand for parking. I know that the Torrington Savings Bank, every time I have a meeting with them, reminds me that they need more parking for their staff. So I do think that this additional parking will not only help fill that need, but I would even venture to say that if there's, if it isn't metered parking, if there are parking passes that allow that reserved parking would be a pretty good way to ensure that that does happen.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is if the Waters Way project goes through and they need parking, will those tenants, I mean, they will not be able to use the teachers' parking. I mean, there will be sufficient signage to let them know that it's not theirs to grab?
Yes. Yes, it's an excellent point. Any of our downtown property owners have apartments. We have right here at 104 Main Street, we have 17 units going down at 11 Main Street. And even when the Yankee Peddler Inn comes back online, we need that parking.
I understand, but if that's for teachers, I, I, sure the public knows. And when they, when teachers leave, if they leave 3:30, 4:30, that people start using those spaces, they have to be out. By the time the staff comes in in the morning and.
Yeah, and.
Be enforced now.
It does work successfully at the Mason Street Parking Lot. Because what we find is the people that are living in the apartments, for the most part, need that parking overnight, not necessarily during the day. So it does work. But yeah, I, I would agree. I think there's a, I know there are placards or stickers that the teachers get right now, so.
Okay. And they would have to be out what time in the morning? The teachers would come in between 7:30 and 8:00, somewhere around there? I mean, if people were trying to use it to park overnight for apartments, they'd have to get up and be out by then, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? While we have Paul on the line?
Good point. Do we know, we had estimated this project, are we within that range of the early estimates when we?
Paul, do you want to field that one?
Yeah, the, the bids came in very favorable, actually under the engineer's estimate, 6% under the, the estimate and under the DECD funding, their, their portion funding. So we were even underneath the funding for their, for their portion of the work. So we were very pleased with the, with the results.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments before I call the motion? And I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item nine, I, I will, thank you, Paul. I'll entertain a motion to accept the Conservation Commission Annual Report for 2024 calendar year as further described in the Assistant City Planner's Memo dated March 3rd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ivane, second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department Report for January and February.
It's all moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Ivane. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on list. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Ivane. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated.
It's all moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Ivane. Are there questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
It's all moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Ivane. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything from the City Treasurer's Office? Thank you, from the purchasing agent? Thank you, from our Director of Budget Management? Well said. Yeah, it's about time, that's what I heard.
They found that pot of gold, huh?
I don't know, the money tree that got chopped down when they did the, when they did the cemetery maintenance. Anything from Public Works, Mr. Drew?
First of all, Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. Hope you either enjoyed some nice corned beef and cabbage over the weekend, or got it planned for tonight. First time, I actually smoked corned beef on a smoker this past weekend, so it was awesome. So, as you, as you're aware, we're kicking off the organics recycling program. Picked it off a couple of weeks ago. Over here on the table are an example of the kits that are being distributed. And speaking with Linda this morning, she informs me that she has over a hundred people have signed up already. And the kits are being distributed, the, the collection site is all set up and running down on Bog Road. So, just trying to continue to get the word out, you know, to encourage people to, or recycle their organics. So, the kit includes an eight-gallon container, a, one, that's lockable, one, the one-gallon container, and twenty-five, I think it's twenty-five compostable bags. The cost for the kit's twenty dollars. So, just wanted to kind of give you a little brief update on that. The mayor and I had met with Eversource, so we're pleased to kind of announce, you know, a program where Eversource, being sponsored by the National Arbor Day Foundation, was giving a community tree giveaway. They're not the saplings, from what Eversource is indicating to us, they're gonna be the, very three-to-four-foot trees. The program is expected to kick off on, they say, March twenty-fourth, so you have to kind of go on Eversource's web portal, sign up. They bring up a, kind of a picture of your property. It's a, kind of a, it's an energy conservation program for urban, to kind of break down urban warning, warming, so to speak. But in our meeting, Eversource is proposing to give away up to a hun, two hundred trees. The event will be held at the Riverview Parking Lot, and it is, currently, we have it scheduled for May the ninth. And I think the times are from twelve to six PM, twelve noon to six PM. So, we're just, this is the first piece we're trying, and we'll be posting on social media and any other, you know, venues that we can think of to get the word out to the community. Once again, it's in conjunction with the National Arbor Day Foundation, Eversource, and the City of Torrington for a community tree giveaway to residents, up to two hundred trees. And then, one last thing, it was interesting. We built a skate park, all the feedback I'm getting is skate park has been a phenomenal success. Last week, we received a petition of four hundred and fifty signatures to install lighting. So, we'll be presenting that to the Parking Rec Commission for further consideration. But, you know, everything, I guess they had some kids up there, they were shoveling the snow off so that they could skate. So, the, the word I'm getting is just, it's been a huge success. Just, those are my brief updates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ray?
Ray, quick question, the trees, are they low-growing trees to be under the power line?
They will be low-growing, tend to be low-growing trees, probably maximum height about twenty feet. You know, designed for that maximum growth, and they're not gonna be like big oaks or big maples or
Basically, you're agreeing where in your yard you're gonna plant it, so that appropriate tree?
Yeah, so the, from, from what they told us, they'll kind of give you some suggestions on your property, where to plant it. You know, if you have a particularly sunny side of the house, where, you know, a twenty-foot tree could provide solar deflection, where the sun's not coming into a particular window, or, so, that's what they've told us.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Anything from the City Clerk's Office? Okay, Corporation Council?
I would just give a shout-out to Moret for the great job she did with the Lord Mayor event this morning, it was great. That's all, thank you.
All right, then, we're gonna move right into, if I may, item fourteen. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
It's all moved.
Thank you, Councilman Ivane, second by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll start from my right, anything this evening, Councilwoman Waldron?
Um, just a note on the sad news of Torrington Volunteers.
Yes.
Shocking. Because I grew up in that part of town where we had the, we always had, there was a siren on a pole in the woods behind the houses up there. And every day, the noon whistle would go off. And then, of course, it would go off when they call all the volunteers in, too, so. But, just an institution in at least our neighborhood, so.
We can still arrange that.
I know, really.
Put it in your backyard.
Yeah.
I, I agree, I was, I won't say shocked, but certainly surprised when they came to see me on Wednesday last week. And our immediate strategy was to get this before the Board of Safety, because as this board knows, I try very hard to make sure that you're not hearing things in the newspaper, or you don't go home at the end, at the end of a meeting and open up your social media pages and see that information. So, I was trying to push that out as fast as I, as I could, but, yeah, that was a pretty quick decision and a very short timeline from Wednesday of last week to April first. But our fire department is already working on what they can do for stopgap measure. I know that our Facilities Director has already been up to the East End Station to see what is there and sort of assess the conditions. So, I think some pretty significant conversations will have to be had between now and any decisions regarding the ability to use that station, because Torrington also needs to consult with their attorney about what their bylaws and their 501(c)(3) federal regulations may be. So, a lot of work, a lot, a lot more questions than answers right now. But I certainly will try to keep that line of communication open, so you all know everything I know when I know it. So, and I agree with you.
It was an emotional
I, I will add that, you know, decades, many decades of dedication, people sacrificed their free time to contribute to making that possible. And, and it was also a feeder for our professional services. So, we got great professional firefighters out of that volunteer initiative. So, thank you to, to everyone involved there.
Well, well said. And I think they shared with me that over the years, they have provided twenty-five career firefighters out of that department, and I think I heard the deputy chief say all of the current leadership team all came from the Torrington Volunteers, yeah.
Right.
Anything else?
No.
All right, Councilwoman Spino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette?
Just echoing the Torrington Fire Department, since it was incorporated in nineteen fifty-seven, my father was one of the founding members of the Fire Department. If you remember, or those of us who've been around, it's quite a farm community, so you really made sure there was enough firefighters. And in those days, there were a lot more fires. That they used a pond down at the end of our corner, you know, to fill up their water trucks and, you know, practice and whatever. So, yes, it's a, but I do want to thank Mr. Potter and Gary, remember Gary?
John Marty.
I think the hilltop, yeah, for their leadership and their, I know that they've been trying to recruit members, but it's, it really is gonna be a loss to the East End of Torrington. And on a more positive note, I congratulate our mayor, our Lord Mayor, Doug O'Connell. It was a great selection to have him with all of his community service. Good man.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
I echo the sentiments by Councilwoman Waldron and Ruette about volunteers. It's funny, we were just discussing at our ordinance meeting how difficult it is to get volunteers for commissions in Torrington, and just the bigger picture, you know. I, I don't, I don't have any answers, I have the same questions as the rest of us, that we have to really, we should really, really, as part of our ongoing business in the city, try to get our heads around the fact that we need to get people aware that this whole thing, a republic, a democracy, it doesn't work, you know, unless you're willing to put some skin in the game and show up and do the business of government, you know? It just doesn't work, and we've got a major problem with that in all these other areas. So, let me get off that, I do have one other question, my bad, I should have brought this up during the resolution discussion regarding the middle school roof project. That five-point-two million, almost five-point-three million, could you break down the finance, once again, the original budgeting, that seven-hundred-thousand represents what, Mayor, from eleven to twenty-one?
Okay, so the, the funding mechanism for the roof project, in twenty-eighteen, the, we sent to the voters a request to cover one-point-four million dollars of educational capital improvements. Seven-hundred-thousand was for roofwork, and seven-hundred-thousand dollars was for windows. The Board of Education, I think it was in twenty-nineteen, they started, they did the work on the, I want to say it's the flat portion of the roof, flat portion of the roof. And that seven, that seven-hundred-thousand-dollar bond was sold, the funds were put in our bonded projects account. The roof project cost six-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars, but we got state reimbursement. So, so there were funds available out of that seven-hundred-thousand-dollar pool of money with the first bond sale. When the ARPA funds came out, the Board of Education asked us to reallocate the second allocation, which was allotted for windows, because they wanted to finish the roofwork. So, we went back to the voters, I believe that was in twenty-twenty or twenty, I think it was twenty-twenty, and asked if we could reallocate those funds for more roofwork. The voters said yes, so that's the additional seven-hundred-thousand dollars of bonding. In the meantime, over the last several years, since twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, the board has been doing a lot of architectural work, structural analysis, and they chipped away at some of those funds that were in the bonded projects account. But there's, there appear to still be sufficient funds to cover the cost of the five-point-two-million-dollar project, hoping, of course, contingent upon that reimbursement rate of seventy-five percent.
Is it fair to say from when the project was approved and authorized, and the Board of Education came back a second time to reallocate seven-hundred-thousand dollars of the original? So, that was one-point-four million that they had about six years ago for the project?
Yes.
And that one-point-four million at that time, Mayor, do you recall how much of the overall cost that represented the one-point-four million then?
For, for the roof, you're talking the, the cost escalation, yeah.
What is the delay, the six-year delay cost approximately?
Maybe not, I'm, yeah, I'd have to go and I'd have to research those numbers. I, I do agree with you, there was cost escalation, even from a year ago when they were trying to move this project forward, and it was a four-million-dollar project. So, even in the last eighteen months, the costs have escalated. So, I will, I, I'll do, I'll pull back all the information and send that to you. It is a significant increase, cost escalation.
Yeah, and my, my, and my comment would be, given how much this city council is being pilloried, I think that's the right word, by members of the Board of Education for our decision to not authorize that administrator's contract, because we thought it was much too, it offered too much, it gave too much away in terms of leave time, and, and, and without any appearance from the Board of Education to explain why this constantly rising cost was not reflected in constantly improving school performance, we acted in good faith to do the appropriate thing. I think it's just outrageous that they have, that this cost has escalated. Solely, the city has done apparently everything asked of the city to get them the funding they needed. And for them to continue to call our actions outrageous, I think reflects on them and their inability to manage even the simplest of capital, not the simplest, but even a straightforward project like a roof replacement, you know, taking six or seven years, and therefore passing that cost along to taxpayers, that I think is what's most outrageous in this whole process, and I would just like to note that. And that's all I have.
No, I appreciate that, and I will give you those numbers, I know I was just trying to look up the last email from the Business Director, Donna Labby, I think. She was somewhere in there, in the, in the chain of emails, they were talking about the cost escalation. I will get those numbers for you, because I do think your, you know, your points are well-made, you know, when we're pinching pennies.
Mayor, I'm gonna ask you specifically, you've got a ton on your plate, I realize that, and this, I don't need you to do additional work for my sake for this, just, just the, oh, here's one other question, as long as I've got the floor again somehow. Is there any way of knowing, and this is definitely a snarky question, and I admit that, and you can go on the record, I'm asking a snarky question, but given the attitude of the Board of Education to our, our finance, our fiscal approval process, do we have any controls of, when they get that five-point-two million, do we have, can they essentially do what they want with it, if?
No, because the way this works is they must submit to the State Department of Education a proposal for the roof project with the request for the reimbursement. Once, and the state, once they get that application and they approve it, everything must be done in accordance with that application.
Okay, because it's going through the state?
It is correct.
Okay, and the strings are very tight between the state and the Board of Education? Okay, got it.
And the strings are equally as tight with our bonded projects funds. So, once we have, once we have voter approval to spend one-point-four million dollars on roofwork, you know, there's a very strict mandate on us to make sure that that money is being spent on roofwork. You can't go out and spend it on windows, which is why we had to go to the voters to get it real, reallocated.
I know, but it's the same argument, whether it applies to capital or applies to the operation, the business of running a reading, writing, arithmetic, education program, it's just quite, it's curious. quite, it's curious that we can have the strings for the capital, but we can't have the strings for the actual education component of an educational system. Drives me nuts, but I, I think, I mean, I just, this escalation in costs, by the way, in all this reallocation of money, where was the money, the original at that time, I guess, what, seven hundred thousand for roof, for window replacement?
Yes.
What happened to that?
So, what happened is the ARPA allocation and Esser money that came
Covered that.
It went directly to the Board of Education, they decided to use that. They did do that job, yes.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
You're welcome, absolutely. All right, there being no other comments before the board, I'm going to reopen this if, if they may have a motion to reopen the meeting to the public, comment on agenda items only.
Tell them move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone from the public wishing to comment? Agenda items. Seeing, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tell them move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Ruette. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.